We have Mr. Spiker, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Shemani, Mr. Wazoric are present. Mr. Klecker is absent. We do have one of our alternates present as well, Ms. Birmingham. We do have a quorum. Next on the agenda is approval of the October 20, 2020 meeting minutes. Any of the members have any questions or comments on the October minutes? If so, please unmute yourself. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Next up on the agenda, we have a review of a subdivision of land located at 602 West 10th. This was prepared by Sanford Surveying and Engineering. The properties located in R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. We do have, I see Mr. Burton is present. To answer any questions. So I will. Invite him in to speak. Mr. Burton, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Peter Burton. Thank you all for looking at our subdivision or zoning planning revision that was put together by Mike Stanford. We're just trying to straighten up some of the property lines. My grandfather and my dad bought several homes in the neighborhood and we took the backyards of the homes and made our parking lot bigger. And now it's time to clean up the deeds a little bit that the homes are standalone and the, the, the backyards that we have taken. We'd like to move the property line over a little bit.
Did any of the members have any questions regarding the subdivision?
I have one. So Mr. Burton, do you plan on divesting from those properties?
Not at this time.
I take no issue. I, I motion to approve if nobody else has any other issues.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Subdivision is approved. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you all.
Next up on the agenda, we have a review of a waterfront conditional use application for construction of a 10 unit three-story wood frame multiple family dwelling located at 946 West Second Street. This is submitted by PE Real Estate Holdings LLC. Properties located in waterfront residential zoning district. We have Mr. Jesuway here this afternoon to speak to that project. Just as a note, the project has gone through the design review. Committee meeting and there was also a zoning variance that was requested that was also approved. Mr. Jesuway, I'll turn over the floor to you.
Sure. Thank you so much for giving us the time to present the project today. So this is a pretty straightforward, small urban infill project. It's an existing lot located between front and second streets. Just between the Bay Front Highway and Plum Street. And the site has been vacant for a very long time. It's in between two multifamily properties. One is the Laura Wallerstein Apartments and another is a small apartment project. Developed, I think about 15 years ago or so. My proposal is to do a 10 unit development. It's a site that's about 14,000 square feet. So I think by law it's entitled for 14 units. We initially put forward a zoning. Board of Appeals application about 60 days ago and had some community comments and went through a process with the community where people were concerned about parking and density. And we downsized this from 14, 13 to 10 units, but maintained the same amount of parking so that there is still excess parking for residents and, and their guests potentially. We came up with a design that is a sort of an example of Great Lakes kind of industrial maritime design. It's a modern traditional kind of combination of, of styles with like a Borden Batten exterior and a weathered wood sort of interior inset area. There are six units that are going to have direct bay views and balconies and another four units that are going to have sort of oblique bay views. And the site is perched, you know, really at the very end of the. Bayfront cliff and so has really great westward views and looks out. The Laura Wallerstein property is, is depressed a full story, so it looks out over top of that. And we hope it, it, you know, sets a precedent for a high quality design in the downtown area. I'm from Erie. I'm a developer in New York, but I was born and raised in Erie and have a lot of family there and spend a good bit of time and interested in, you know, doing some quality projects, you know, where they're available.
Have a question. I get a chance to read all the documents, but it's going to be an income sensitive apartment complex or no?
Market rate.
Market rate, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Rich, would you like to make any comments regarding the design review committee meeting from a couple of weeks ago?
It was a pretty straightforward approval. There were no, no particular issues raised or discussed. No, I think that, that. That everything, the, the changes that have been made are reflective input that was received with his community meeting. And we had. No objection at, at the design review committee. If no one else has questions, I would. Move to approve.
I'll second that. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
All right.
I need to.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion is, is approved. Thank you, Philip.
Right, thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for the investment.
Indeed. Next up on the agenda. We have proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for the city of Erie under, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Proposed amendments to the, to the ordinance as far as Article 7 Historic Resource Preservation. I know this is just kind of the opening discussion on this and. We had kind of a draft that was recently sent out to the planning commission members for initial review. I'll have Kathy Rostick speak to that, give everybody an overview.
Thanks Jake. For those who, I think some of you have been invited consistently. I know Mark was our liaison to the Historic Preservation Task Force that was created by the mayor and city council by resolution in March of 2019. And since July, that task force has been working on positioning the city to become more progressive and advocate more for historic preservation from a local government standpoint. The early recommendations of the task force has been to position the city to become a certified local government. Which is a status that the state would designate to communities that are showing exactly what we're trying to do here is that they're, they're claiming stake to becoming more involved in historic preservation. And there's a number of components that we have to prove. One and one being what you have before you, which is a historic review or historic preservation portion of our zoning ordinance that passed their muster. So for lack of a better term, that's what I were going to call what we're, what you're, what you have before you. This is definitely a working document. If I've already gotten some changes back from the state Historic Preservation Office on this. But it is really the first step to really getting us in a position to become a certified local government. And one of the reasons the task force sees that as a very necessary and a high priority is because it, what it would do, it was a, it would provide a direct source of technical assistance from the state on what we can be doing with historic preservation in Erie. And they really saw that we needed that. We needed additional resources. We needed more, we needed to tap into more funding to help people who want to preserve their historic buildings, create historic districts and the like. But we also wanted to have a streamlined sort of open line of communication with our state agencies who can then help us build a more, more progressive historic preservation program in the city. So the CLG there would be, if we are selected, we would be the 44th or 45th community in the, in the state. With that designation. It is a nation, that, it is a nationwide program, so we're not the only ones. CLG communities also can tap into funding that's just earmarked for CLG communities. So that would be a big benefit. But we also want to hold ourselves accountable to do more as a local government in support of historic preservation. So the biggest, the biggest lift to positioning ourselves to do that is the creation of a local ordinance. This could either be a standalone ordinance as described by the Historic District Act, or it can be done within a zoning ordinance, which is what we're proposing to do. Your zoning ordinance already has an Article 7 Historic Resource Protection. It was designed to sort of be a placeholder for when the city was ready to actually have a designate an historic district somewhere in the city. But it needed, it needs more work. We needed to, as part of the ordinance, create a historic review commission, which I did send you and I apologize for sending it so late, but like I said, I've been working and reworking on this document for a week or so. But wanted to get something in front of you, even though it's still in draft form. So you can, you have time to review it before December, which is when we would like the planning commission to actually make us an official review and/or recommendation to city council. But the Historic Review Commission is a necessary component and they would be a commission who is advisory to city council on, on the, on the issue of historic resources. What the zoning ordinance does is it essentially would create an overlay district for district wide historic areas that we're somewhat familiar with. But it would also allow historic individual properties to be designated as historic. And those properties could be buildings, they could be sites, they could be objects. And they, at, at the point that they're designated by the city, it's essentially like it would go through a zoning amendment to be designated. It's an overlay. So it's a, it's in addition to what the underlying zoning would require for the types of uses for those buildings. And then the HRC is the one that's actually reviewing and making recommendation to the planning commission if that property should be rezoned, if it meets the qualifications as historic. And we have those guidelines in this document as well, which is why it gets so large. We have to do a lot in a little space. And then once it is, once those properties are designated, anytime there's a major modification that can be seen from the public right of way, much, it's a, it's a lot like the waterfront district. It's treated a lot like that. They would have, the property owner would have to go in front of HRC for what we're going to call a certificate of appropriateness. Whether or not they're meeting the guidelines for that historic area. And then would that certificate of appropriateness, if it's, if it's a major improvement or demolition, I guess in some cases, that would also require a city council review and approval. And as I said, this is a rezoning, the, what we contemplate if properties are brought into this type of zoning, it would be either at the request of the property owner, as is what is traditional now with rezonings. Or of course, the legislative body could rezone property like they can now. So it would follow the same types of processes. I do have a lot of feedback from State Historic Preservation Office. I still am waiting feedback from the city solicitor on the draft. So as I said, you're going to see some changes to what you have in front of you. But I wanted to get you something to look at and respond and be thinking and considering hopefully by December. One of the reasons that. We would like to move forward now with this is we do have an application into the state to become a CLG. And that was at their recommendation, even though we don't have the ordinance in place yet. But they felt like it was worthy because of the momentum that the task force has created. They thought it was appropriate to go ahead, get our application in. We actually have a grant request in as well as a CLG community because they've also encouraged us to do that. So we would like to position ourselves to potentially get the grant, get the designation. But it's also, it's also timely to get this section of the zoning ordinance. Up to date and in a position where if we do have properties that are, that should be preserved and regulated locally, that we have a mechanism now by which they can do that. So I know you have a lot on the, on your agenda, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to, to answer them or try to answer them. And if not, we will have yet another opportunity in December to review this.
Any initial questions or comments? I know we haven't had time to look this over and, and you know, with the state's input to make sure that the language is, you know, up to snuff and updated. That's kind of the big thing right now to get this finalized. Is that a fair statement Kathy?
Yeah. I had a nice conversation with Bill Callahan. He sent me lots of comments. Nothing too dramatic, so you're not going to see major changes. Just a little bit finer detail on design guidance and standards. But other than that, it, it pretty much covers everything we needed to cover.
Jake?
Excellent.
Hey Kathy? What's the relationship between the HRC and the planning commission?
The, the relationship is not, I don't want to say it's very close. So you, the planning commission cannot override the HRC. It's almost in tandem. So the planning commission needs to be supportive of the creation of the HRC. So it starts here with you as the zoning, because it's embodied in the zoning ordinance. But the HRC at that point sort of becomes a standalone agency in how they review and advise the city. In, in that respect, in their area of expertise.
Yep, okay. I was wrong, I'm going to say. Guess it would be 706. There are a bunch of paragraphs that. Talk about the planning commission reviewing and then there are other references to the commission. And it would be helpful to. Port out which commission is response you're referring to. You know, it's not absolutely clear to me that the planning commission or the HRC that you're talking about. In any of those. Or in several.
I know. Yes, thank you for that Rich. In fact, that's what the state office and I were talking about most today was that, those sections. Because it could be a time too where the Historic Review Commission is reviewing a proposal. And the planning commission is also reviewing it because it might be a conditional use of the use. So this will be sort of almost uncharted territory and how we, how we language ourselves and word ourselves out in, into that. But that's where we focus mostly on. So I'm not surprised you picked up on that too, Rich.
Well, and, and there's several like in. Further on D and through G where we both have to, both HRC and the planning commission have to. Review something and transmit it and how do we ensure that that's done on a coordinated basis rather than. You know, it all going across your desk.
And that, that is, that's more than likely going to be very separate when it comes to an alteration, new construction or demolition within a district. So I'm going to, that section I'll modify quite a bit because it'll probably just go to HRC and then city council. But when there's actually a designation, it's like going to be treated like a reason. So you're, you're going to see it as well as city council and those, those initial designations.
Okay. I, I just, it would be. Better if it were absolutely clear and not. So mixed together.
Yep. No, I appreciate that.
And then I think my last one had to do with. Under 7072 new building construction. You know. It talks about in paragraph two or somewhere in there that. Goes into. Copy or replicate the existing. Aesthetic of a neighborhood or design of a neighborhood. And yet it lays out a series of. Items to consider. Which basically are. Do what the neighbors have done or do what the neighborhood has done and limits variation pretty significant. And. You know, if you're constructing a new house in a presidential, that may make sense. But. There could be, this could be districts with. Other proposed uses or. That are developing in a different direction than current use.
Or at least the design is what you're.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I did, that, you could have a, you could have a district that has lots of simple family. dwellings on relatively small lots and that. Someone has a large lot that's appropriate for. A multifamily building or mixed use of some sort that. May, might be very difficult to fit into the current development pattern. So. I, that, that's my.
If the use is not complementary to the historic use of the district, you're concerned with that?
Well, it might. It, it, it would have to be, I guess. I, I, that's an issue, I suppose, but I was just thinking purely design and aesthetic wise that. You know. A neighborhood of 1,500 square foot two-story dwellings. And units. You know, that. Are a different height, might still fit within the zoning, but not necessarily within the structures laid out here. You know, and there is. Says do this or.
I kind of agree with your, with your going, where you're going, Rich. That one in particular, one item H for building materials kind of rose, it gives me a little friction in my thinking because this building material should be compatible with materials commonly used within the historic district. Does that mean we should be using asbestos and lead paint and. There should be some. Clarity to the, that section. Are you, are you going to dictate people need to put slate roofs on? That could be prohibitive to future growth if you're dictating a lot of these things.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it's an interesting, interesting perspective, but I mean, you, you do have to be cognizant of you want to maintain a certain level of, of design and aesthetic. So you wouldn't want, yeah, you wouldn't want vinyl siding necessarily on a new building within a, within a designated district. You would want to see at least from the standpoint of the public right of way to have, for it to have a certain appearance that's consistent with the historic buildings that are there. That is something.
Agreed.
That, that makes sense Kathy, but could that potentially be cost prohibitive to the owner of those structures or depending on what materials would be more, you say equivalent to what they currently have? I mean, I, I, I'm all for historic preservation, but to Jason's point, should there be more wiggle room on how that's? How that's worded?
And. What, what's, what you're, what you're going to see too is when districts are designated by the HRC, there's going to be specific design guidelines that come with the district. So this is, these should be very general to give guidance. But when the district is actually created, that will come with much more specific guidelines. But once you go into it, it'll be up to the HRC to vary from. From those guidelines once they're established. So, you know, it does have to be somewhat restrictive and it's really up to the HRC to, to try to sort of marry that issue. There will be a provision and it's going to be a little bit stronger than the one you, the amendment you have before you regarding hardship. So there is some hardship provisions, economic hardship will be one of them. So there is, there is some wiggle room when it comes to that.
Is it, Kathy, is it something where the state would be able to provide some sort of state or, or city perhaps? There's, there's funds that are available. I'm getting an echo. Do you guys have an echo on, for me? No?
A little bit, a little bit, but I can hear you.
You know, there's, there's lots of preservation resources that are available out there. There's got to be something that, that remedies that situation if there's a hardship. Because I, I think that this is in, in many cases, the difference that we see in, you know, from neighborhood to neighborhood and also from city to city. Where aesthetics makes a difference. And I think having this kind of, these kind of designated districts make a huge difference in, in. Let's say Erie standing out from a, from a Pittsburgh or a Cincinnati where, and I know we can't necessarily compare ourselves to some of those larger cities, but I think that we can hold ourselves to some quality standards. And, and I think as the planning commission, that's our job, ensuring that, you know, when you go into a. You know, when you go into a a preserved district like that, that that the houses. Look. Historically accurate in some sense. And so surely there's got to be some funding out there that would help someone.
There, well, there certainly is, particularly for. Properties that are on the National Register, they would qualify for tax credits, historic tax credits. And that's how the state and the the federal government tries to incentivize and help with what is typically a costlier rehab. Is to do things within historical. Neat within a historical context of the building. It is costlier, but you can see the the results, you know, some of the successes of doing. Going along those lines and going above beyond is the West Sixth Street properties that Tom Hagan is refurbishing and and he's certainly tapping into. And I don't know how much he's done, but he's tapping into the tax credit program to do that. Now, once you're in that program, those buildings, those buildings inside and outside are held to a very high standard. So once you take tax cut credit or or federal funding. To for for historic preservation, those buildings are held to a much higher standard than any local regulation, local ordinance would do.
Right.
So same with EDDC. I mean, they'll they'll be tapping into tax credits to do a lot of the work that they're doing downtown.
Thank you.
Well, I I didn't realize that. Intent was for the HRC to. Vary them requirements by district. Uh, that didn't come across anywhere. I think that needs to be articulated in a way that people understand that. And I understand that that historic districts are about preserving. The character of. Particular neighborhood or. Area within it, but. Historically, you know, particularly in a city like Erie, there's lots of neighborhoods that had multiple mixed uses, had. A variety of types of buildings. All jumbled together and and if. I think it's a shame to to say we're going to pick pleasing image of. This type of structure and and that's the only thing that needs to be preserved or replicated. That's. It's my editorial, I guess.
Well. And I appreciate that and just actually creating these districts locally is not going to be an easy proposition. I mean, you're going to have to like exactly, you're going to have to consider weigh all those alternatives and the impact. Everything you just said, Rich. Is going to have to be weighed and but you got to start somewhere. You've never had, you haven't had the framework to even do that now. But now with the. With the amendment, at least you have the structure by which that can happen before you didn't. And that's really what we want to make sure.
I have another question, Kathy and or Jake, the. I'm still looking at those letters and that one list under new building, but. One in particular is inducing the question from me that will we have to revise some of our zoning that might be in conflict with some of this in in particular F. Spacing of buildings on the street setbacks and side yards of new buildings should be similar to those in adjacent yards. Or historical neighborhoods, building new is. It's pretty hard to. Comply and meet all those and some of our smaller lots are on town. You know what I'm saying? Like the.
Are you, Jason, are you suggesting that? The that these these standards can't be met? You're concerned that these standards can't be met with new builds? Are you saying these standards conflict with other standards?
Yes, conflict in that it's it could be stricter in some, you'd have to look at case by case on depending on the proportions of the properties, but. It's it's difficult to replicate a lot of the houses that are separated five feet apart from each other in the city. So how how do you accomplish that?
I'm not sure. We'll have to look at, again, that that probably becomes down to when you're actually creating the district. And you have to sort of come to terms with what is the impact? On that district, what makes sense for the size of the district and things like that. That's a good question, though. I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure we can, we can write an ordinance that. That we're we'll have zero conflict, but we can certainly look at that. If you see anything, Jason, that sticks out, I'm making notes, but.
Yeah, that's the only thing that comes to mind right now when I'm skimming this is that like my my neighbor's house is seven feet from my house. How would you build something? How would you replicate that situation in my neighborhood in a new build? Or there are empty lots in my neighborhood, it's possible, but.
Yeah, I suppose that that's there's a possibility, but you know, in that in that section, it does say that for new construction or additions. That it does have to comply with the underlying zoning district. So. I I do see that, though, there could be some potential where the existing, the regs for the underlying zoning district, not all of the buildings on that. Block, for instance, might actually meet them. They could all have been grandfathered in as far as setback requirements. So you're right, there's there's potential maybe for some conflicts there, but. It just would have to be handled case by case.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that. This conversation, again, we'll we'll pick this up in December. You'll have. We'll make sure that some of our task force members are on there in case you have any specific questions for them as well as our. Our advisor from State Historic Preservation Office, Bill Callahan. But you'll again, you'll see a different version coming your way sooner than later. I promise you won't get it a few days before the the next, the next meeting. I'll try to have that done by the end of this week. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from other attendees regarding this agenda item? I before I move on to the next agenda item. Did want to give people in attendance an opportunity to register any comments and I guess as a lead in. To our next agenda item, I know several of the folks in attendance. Are are interested in the next agenda item and just wanted to kind of set forth. What our protocol will be for accepting comments. I know Frank alluded to it earlier in the meeting. I don't think everybody was signed on yet necessarily. So with regards to. Public comments, if anybody wants to register a comment to weigh in when we open the floor to the public. Please use that raise hand function. With Zoom and then what we'll do is we will get to everybody one by one. And since there's a number of people, we'll probably limit each individual's comments to. Typically, we've limited those comments to a couple of minutes, so everybody has an opportunity to speak. But if there if there are no comments regarding this issue, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And that is ongoing conversation.
Um, I saw John Whaley had his hand up. I don't know if that was for this comment or the next one.
I did just notice that as well.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I had a quick, my name's John Whaley. I did have a quick comment on the what you were just talking about, the historic districts. For instance, I was just in Lake Placid last week and everything follows a design standard, a building standard. McDonald's, banks, grocery stores, Family Dollar. It's something the city wants and they protect. And, you know, unfortunately, if you don't want to build a Dollar General that looks aesthetically pleasing like the city wants it, then you don't build one. That's the option. And so. If you want to build a home in one of our new historic districts or whatever this turns into, then you do follow design standards and you must use a certain type of light and a certain type of material and a certain type of roofing. And if you don't want to build it there, then I would say you build it somewhere else. But if we're going to ever have a city that looks cohesive and beautiful and nice, then somebody's got to start enforcing. Some zoning and some building standards. So that's my two cents on that issue. I think you lay down the law and it's the law and. There are consequences, but you start giving variances and having. Meetings where we're going to let Mr. Smith not put on this type of roof. Well, you've just degraded the whole neighborhood and the whole concept that you're trying to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robleski?
Yes, yes. Uh, good afternoon. I'd like to speak to the issue of the Airbnb. First of all, I have to find it ironic. Can you hear me?
Mr. Robleski?
Yes.
Um. Can you? I'd like to have you wait until we have the start our initial discussion on that and then I'll I'll open the floor to the public. After the commission has had their started the conversation of that agenda item. So I'll just ask you to hang on a second.
Okay, but you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, moving on to that item, our ongoing review of of. Short-term rental issue and. What I'd like to do is we did put together kind of a fact sheet, if you will, that the commission members took a look at last month. We've made some amendments to that, some updates to that based on our conversation last month. And. I'd like to bring Tessa in to talk a little bit about the write-up that the planning commission members have been looking at. And then kind of do some Q and A amongst the amongst the planning commission members and then we will open the floor to public comments. Tessa.
Hi, everyone. I first just wanted to introduce myself. For those who haven't met me, I am the new zoning officer for the city. So I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. So to start with the short-term rentals, I know a big discussion we had. Last month was the legality of regulating them in R1 and R1A zoning districts. I did talk to the city solicitor about it and he did confirm that municipalities do have the authority to. Include short-term rentals as permitted uses in R1 or R1A, really any zoning district that they see fit. So with that all cleared up. Just to kind of go over some of the major points in the staff report that I've written for you guys. If you do want me to stop and so you guys can discuss a talking point or if you have any questions, feel free to to interrupt me and we can go over that. Um, so starting out with designating short-term rentals as permitted uses in zoning districts. And we first initially thought. That we they should be permitted uses in in districts that have similar uses such as bed and breakfasts or hotels, motels. Um, so we do have a table on page four of. Of the staff report that we had sent to you guys that lists those similar uses. So that would be in R2, R3. RLB, C2, C3, C4. Waterfront Commercial, Waterfront Commercial 2, Waterfront Commercial 3 and Waterfront Residential. And then in R1 and R1A. We were thinking of designating short-term rentals as special exceptions. I know that those low-density zoning districts is where a lot of the differing opinions are, so that might may be a good compromise. And then we can attach certain conditions. To alleviate some of the worries that residents have to when allowing short-term rentals in those lower. Lower-density residential districts. And then. Moving on to the definition of short-term rentals. The one that we have as a preliminary recommendation is really the most relaxed definition. There is. It would allow the dwelling unit or it would allow short-term rentals to be permitted in. In rooms of a dwelling unit or an entire dwelling unit. And it would also allow the owner to be there or not to be there. So that is something that you guys can discuss. And restrict it if you choose to do so. And then in order to have short-term rentals be regulated, we wanted to fold it into the. Landlord and rental code to include short-term rentals in that. So if anyone in the city does want to have a short-term rental, they would have to register it. With our rental program to ensure that they're meeting all the code, building code requirements. And then also include it in the zoning ordinance as well. So those are the major points. I know it's a lot of information to digest and go over. We don't have to make any definitive decisions today, but just kind of to get the ball rolling. So with that, I'll open up, open it up to you guys and if you have any questions or something that you would like to be elaborated upon. Feel free to do so.
Yes, I have a question, Tessa. Special exceptions and variances are are very similar, except for a special exception is easier to make something pass. And I just wonder how, why it came under special exceptions to do this and not a variance.
Um, it's a good question. It was just something that, yeah, we we had contemplated whether having it be a conditional use or a special exception. We thought if we we had certain conditions that would attack that we would attach to it. It would just be, you know, a better process for the applicant to go through, make it more of an efficient process. But, you know, having it be a special exception or a conditional use could be something that you guys can debate and. You know, it, like I said, it's not set in stone to have it as a special exception.
Okay, thank you.
Who decides a special exception? By the staff decision? Or does that go through council like a?
It would go through the zoning hearing board.
If if an owner does not submit themselves to the. Oh, system for rental, the rental code stuff, how how do you find, are you seeking them out or are you relying on the snitch system to capture those?
Um, it would, to be honest, I mean, it would be pretty hard to track down every Airbnb in the city that that is in registering. With with the rental program, so it would be, we would. To in order to administer properly, I mean, we would probably have to rely on citizen comments or, you know, anything else that gets reported to our office.
And I guess that's kind of, I asked that same question last month. It's a little redundant, but. If if we decide that short-term rentals are not to be allowed in R1, how would we? Is that the same thing? We're relying on citizen input to hunt those down? If they're noncompliant?
Um, I would say yes. I mean, Jake, would you have anything to add to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, enforcement's always the toughest issue regardless of what the, you know, what section of the zoning ordinance we're talking about. Enforcement can be difficult.
Yeah, but you know, if we do fold it into the. Yeah, but you know, if we do fold it into the rental and landlord uh, code, then you know, there are violations that are associated with not registering it. That would help with the enforcement once we do know of someone that's not, you know, abiding by the rules.
Are they going to pay all the fees as if they're a landlord? For?
Uh, yeah, if they, they have to pay the same rental fee as anyone else that would own a rental property. Were there any other uh, questions? If, if not, perhaps you can, um, you know, ma- ma- make some preliminary decisions so we can start writing up a, a draft ordinance for it? Or if we, I, um, if there aren't any more comments, we can open it up to a public comment?
I, I like the idea of designating uh, STRs per your preliminary recommendations. And number one, and I, I really like the idea of special exceptions in R1. I think that's a good compromise for um, those that are defensive of of maintaining the supposed character of their neighborhoods, uh, keeping certain people out and supposedly maintaining their property values as such, so. Um, and if there are certain pockets of, of neighbors that want to allow those in R1s, then, then they'll have a path of little resistance, right? So I think, I think that's the best compromise.
Another motion?
Uh, before we move on to, to um, making any motions, I, I see that um, our solicitor did join the conversation and I just wanted to, uh, I know that Ed had initially, uh, when council started exploring this, you know, there was a study session quite some time ago, and I, I thought it might be helpful. If, uh, we had a couple of questions that as, as Tessa mentioned, uh, about municipal authority and where uh, this use can be permitted, things of that nature. But I just kind of wanted to open the floor up to Ed and to Kathy as well, just to see if there were any other additional um, comments at this point uh, from their perspectives.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Um, this is Ed Betza. My, my general recommendation as you're going forward is decide where you want to allow uh, short-term rentals. And if you want to allow short-term rentals within the city of Erie. Um, you have, the city has the power to regulate where it wants them and where they're not permitted. You just need to decide what's best. Uh, there's been people that have said they have to be allowed in R2 or they can't be allowed in R1. And that's, that's simply not correct. It's whatever is in the best interest of the city uh, is what we do. The Supreme Court has essentially said that short-term rentals because of their potential to change neighborhoods are not permitted unless you allow them to be permitted and regulate them where you want them. So what I've told counsel and what I'll tell uh, the commission is decide what you think the best use of short-term rentals are, where they should be. And if, if they shouldn't be allowed in certain areas and move forward. Uh, the planning commission has identified, I'm sorry, the zoning office has identified um, a, a potential idea of moving forward, allowing them in the less restrictive residential areas and allowing them by special exception and the more restrictive. And that would be perfectly legal. Uh, the question for you, you have broad legal authority as to how, what to allow and how to allow it. The big burden that's placed on you and ultimately on city council is what's best for the city.
Thank you, Ed. Um, Kathy, did you have any other comments to add regarding the uh, just kind of our preliminary recommendations? I know we'll need to flesh out the special, special exception um, concept.
Uh, yeah, I've got nothing else to add between what, what you and Tessa and, and Ed have. I mean, it's pretty much, it's pretty straightforward. We had to go no-go, let's start drafting some ordinance language and then get it back in front of the planning commission and then you decide where you want it to go or, or not. So I think it's a, it's a good start, so.
Excellent. Uh, if the commission members don't have any other comments at this point, we could uh, open up the floor to our other attendees here uh, to get their comments. Um, so if you do want to register a comment, uh, just raise your hand. What I'm going to do is basically, uh, I'll go down through and we'll let everybody speak one by one. With that, and I'm just going basically in order of the names as they appear on the list. So we'll start with uh, with Ben Henry.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I had prepared um, just some notes on this topic based on our last conversation and frankly, I'm, I'm really happy to hear that some of the talking points might not even need to be addressed based on what Tessa has put forth and as well as what the solicitor has, has presented. Um, it seems to, it seems that um, we all can now move forward with the understanding that it is up to us to have a conversation and decide where and how uh, short-term rentals are permitted and that we have to define short-term rentals as its own use uh, code or however you would say it. So it seems that we're on the same page about those things. Those were the big um, first steps that I think were super important. Um, I'm also very, very happy to hear that it sounds like there would be pathways for people to have Airbnbs regardless of the zone. Um, if it is conditionally approved or, or special exception. Also, I think that that's a really wonderful thing for our city. I think we all need to just keep in mind that this ultimately leads to, you know, more revenue coming in for taxes, more revenue for businesses, more revenue for our citizens. And ultimately, that is a good thing. Um, with that being said, you know, really my only comment to add is just that we should not lose the ability to have Airbnbs in, in really any zone as long as it is uh, approved. Um, and a suggestion I would put forth is that you know, other than approaching it case by case, maybe you set some sort of uh, numerical limit based on the zone. Um, you know, the population or the density or whatever it is as initial caps on how many Airbnbs can be in certain areas. And then that can be revisited uh, if you find that there, you know, are, are that, that they are, are focused in certain zones or for, focused in certain neighborhoods, if that makes sense. Um, yeah, so, so other than that, I'm just very, very happy to hear that we are thinking progressively and, and moving in a direction that's going to be helpful for, for everyone. Um, that's really all I have to add. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ben. Uh, the one thing I would mention is that if you do, if you do have some comments uh, that you would like to put in writing and submit to our office that uh, can be forwarded, you know, we can certainly forward to the planning commission members. Um, what I would say is uh, if you do have some written comments you'd like to submit, you can submit those to uh, at the email address I'm going to give everybody, at zoning@erey.p a.us. So again, just as another option to provide some input, zoning@erey.p a.us. Next up, we'll have Mr. Robleski.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you. Uh, first of all, I really find it ironic that the agenda item right before ours was the preservation of neighborhoods, historical neighborhoods. Um, I don't really understand why at this particular point that you're considering to uh, destroy the tranquility and harmony of a residential neighborhood for allegedly as Mr. Henry would uh, argue for profits. Uh, first of all, this is not an economic development zone, okay? We're not here to uh, generate revenue. We're here to preserve the tranquility of our community in our neighborhood. That's why we moved up here. There are certainly other areas of the city in which uh, investors can invest in which need the economic development, okay, other than residential. Uh, so my, my particular position is that I do not support, okay, opening up R1 to transient rental property. There's too many negatives. Uh, I, I like to know how many of you live in R1 neighborhoods? And how do you feel about having your neighbors having uh, parties all night long, okay, prom parties? Um, beer cans all over the place, okay? It's a complete disruption of the neighborhood and the tranquility and the harmony of why we invest in Erie and why we invest in R1 neighborhoods. And then secondly, Mr. Rizorik, uh, to your comment about keeping certain people out, that's erroneous. We, we're not looking at the targeting of keeping any certain people out of neighborhoods. We're looking for the preservation and the tranquility of our own neighborhood. Okay, and um, you know, allowing uh, like I say, people to come in, they have parties, uh, you don't know who's coming in. Um, they could have the virus. The, the potential is erroneous, that um, that you would even consider this thought even coming up of destroying a neighborhood in the city of Erie. So that's my particular uh, position on it. If you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mokris?
Afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Gary Mokris. I have been a Erie city resident now for 14 years. I live over on West Arlington Road. And I am also the president of the Glenwood Association. And I would just like to begin by stating that our position is not that we are against the idea of regulating short-term rentals within our city. As long as they fall within these proper zones that are already set forth within our own city ordinances. Um, I'm sure last uh, meeting, which I was unable to attend, you heard some nice stories from some renters that have homes in R1 zones. Uh, none of which actually live in our city about how beneficial these rentals are for the city that they actually don't even live in. Uh, you've heard them state how they've never received complaints, which may be true because they're unable to be contacted by their neighbors. So most of those complaints are reverted to me. And we've received numerous complaints about a particular property on Upland Drive and then two other subsequent properties that have popped up since. Uh, as we all know, ordinances should benefit the many, not the few, which is why we can't ignore the actual residents of our community. Whereas over 85% of, we have 279, 270 homes that within our association and 85% of those have contributed funding for our appeals processes through the last four years. And we have a unanimous decision from the city Erie zoning board. Uh, Judge Dmitrovich's decision that the zoning law was not applied properly. The unanimous Supreme Court decision. I mean, this goes on and on. So allowing short-term rentals in R1 zones would just obviate the need for zoning, as zoning is intended to keep like uses in similar areas. This would also be an issue with the state municipal planning code that requires a place for everything. Whereas if our city were to allow two-family, three-family, or four-family homes within the R1 zone, where does that leave families who are seeking that R1 zone to live in? So the theory that short-term rentals are not in our address in our zoning laws also kind of, it's kind of great because transient is defined as anything less than 30 days, single-family dwellings are defined. And they're the only dwellings that are actually allowable in an R1 zone. So the Supreme Court ruling that was based on a quote, clear intent of single-family use. But it's about regulating land use, right? So if the city believes that R1 zone should no longer be single-family use, this seems to be a much broader issue than just a, you know, a special exemption. So within the Supreme Court's ruling itself, they stated at best that quote, "Short-term tenants have little interest in public agencies or in the welfare of the citizenry." They do not participate in local government, coach Little League, you know, lead a scout troop, volunteer at the library, or keep an eye on an elderly neighbor. Literally, they're here today, gone tomorrow, without engaging in the sort of activities that weld and strengthen a community. The permanence and stability of people living in single-family zones creates a sense of community, cultivates and fosters relationships and provides an overall quality of a place where people are invested and engaged in their neighborhood and care about each other. So I please ask all of you to take this into regard and uh, try and keep the strength of our neighborhood strong. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Whaley?
Thank you. Uh, my name's John Whaley. I live on Gordon Lane, which is up in Glenwood. I happen to live next to Mr. Robleski and he's an enjoyable neighbor and we watch out for each other. My neighbor on the other side is an 80-year-old woman who depends on me to go to the store for her and pick up her um, medicines, et cetera. That's the fabric of a neighborhood. And so I like where I live. Uh, we bought the house my wife grew up in. I'm a firm believer that R1 is exactly what it should be. I would ask the same question. I, I don't want to sound rude, but how many of you live in an R1 district and pay almost 9,000 a year in property taxes? Um, we want the fabric of these neighborhoods protected. Um, you can't see me because I don't have video, but I'm, I'm reading the Erie Refocused Plan. And some of the main topics in there are keeping Frontier and Glenwood quote-unquote healthy. And here's a quote, "For buyers looking for solid areas of well-maintained properties, keeping it healthy and making it even more appealing is important for the city's competitiveness and overall market strength." Um, so there's an Airbnb operating on my street. Last week, there were probably eight people, it looks like rented out the house, parked up and down the street on both sides. Um, if you were in bed and breakfast, as, as noted by the zoning code in the city of Erie, you would have to have one off-street parking spot for every dwelling unit. Uh, you have to follow some other rules, which, which I don't think they're following. Um, I have heard the argument, and I'm interested to see how an Airbnb in a private property increases revenues and taxes for the city. Um, it doesn't. So if someone charges 82 bucks to sleep in their house, they keep the $82. Their taxes don't go up. They don't give any of that revenue to the city. Um, if you were to allow it, I, I guess I would want it to fall under the hotel uh, tax rule also. Um, if you want to talk about opening up Airbnbs, they take away revenue and taxes from the city and the county. Uh, we're very dependent on those revenues to pay for the hotels downtown, the Bayfront Convention Center. Um, he's, he's incorrect. Um, that's my neighbor, I believe. Um, he's not even using his real name. So the um, the other thing that really bothers me is special exemptions. I've lived here on and off since 1985 and I was at the city council meeting when there was an ordinance passed about the bayfront and height restrictions for all new buildings that are going to be built down there. And it was capped at, I believe, 50 or 60 feet. Every single building built down on the bayfront has received an exemption, a variance. Why do we have that law? The law was passed with a certain intent. So my real fear is that if you say, you know what, we're, we're not going to blanketly allow Airbnb in R1, we're going to go for special exemptions. I, I think that every single person that trots into the meeting and says, well, I'd like an exemption, I think they'll be given one. I'd like to understand what it would take to not get one or what, what they have to prove to get one. Um, so I, I believe the state Supreme Court got it right. I think they said that uh, single-family dwellings in R1s are protected. I think they said that single-family dwellings in R1s are protected. I'd ask you to protect that, grow it in all the areas of the city where we can, Bayfront, downtown, Marvintown, all the places that could use investment and could use these revenues. But R1, I'd like you to stay away from it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Lucinda?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
To Mr. Whaley, Airbnb does take taxes out, and the city of Erie has been receiving taxes from Airbnbs that are in the city of Erie. Oh, excuse me. Also, it has been proven that short-term rentals take way better care of their properties than long-term rentals, and even some of the residents. That being mostly because they want their properties to be appealing for the short-term rentals. And I can certainly speak for the Airbnb that we are affiliated with, that it has taken very good care of. The property values have not gone down because of Airbnbs. If anything, the properties in Glenwood in the last few years have gone up. That is definitely not because of the Airbnb, but my point is the tax, the property value has not gone down. We have become neighbors, friends with our neighbors on the Airbnb, the houses next to us are Airbnb. They have no complaints with us, they have no problems. And again, to reiterate, over the last four years, there have been absolutely no complaints. Like, a police has never been called, no neighbor has come and knocked on the door as often as I have been at that house, or complained to any of our guests. That has never, ever happened. And I am quite sure that Mr. Morkus could get hold of the owner of the house. He has gotten hold of her via mail several times. And then I would just like to make one more point, that on an average, searches for Airbnb in Erie, Pennsylvania have been 100% more than the previous year. This indicates that people are traveling and staying in Erie more than ever before, largely part to Airbnbs or short-term renting. Being a pro-Airbnb city is synonymous with being pro-traveler and pro-tourism. Most of these people that have stayed at our Airbnb have been locals at one time. They have roots here, they are families. What brings them to Glenwood is the family atmosphere and the lovely neighborhood that they respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Lucinda touched on a lot of the very good topics. One that I wanted to say was, again, there's really no evidence of not knowing your neighbors, not knowing who's in the house. I have owned the house in Glenwood Hills that we now use as an Airbnb for 10 years, and I know the people in the neighborhood that I actually knew before I even bought the house. There are many times you really don't know your neighbors, and I think Airbnb people have, we do, we know their background, which is more than I know about my other neighbors. But I will say that there really are no disruptions. People will not buy properties in Glenwood or Frontier for Airbnbs. The taxation is too high, the upkeep is too high, it's too expensive. So it's not really something that I feel the commission should be worried about, that properties are going to pop up as a business venture. It really is too expensive. Again, our neighbors have said they don't mind because we keep the house up. And as far as being concerned about the city of Erie, I spent three months in that house this year, and it's, I volunteer in Erie, I make donations in Erie, I go to church in Erie, I belong to a club. I care about that neighborhood. I grew up in the Frontier area. I love Glenwood Hills. I don't think it's a disruption. If anything, I think it's an introduction to our city. And a lot of times, and I don't mean to be abrupt when I say this, but Glenwood has a history of systemic racism, and all we're saying to people from out of town is, geez, you can come stay in Airbnb in Erie as long as it's a bad neighborhood, but if it's a nice neighborhood, forget it, you don't need to stay there. And I, it's what invites people. I mean, I'm, well, maybe, depends on the virus, but I'm going to, I have stayed in many Airbnbs in beautiful neighborhoods around the country and plan to stay on one in Arizona very soon. They're well-kept, and when you do limit the amount, you know, restricting them with a permit or with a regulation, when there are complaints, when there is disruption, I agree, you know, you need to shut them down. Airbnb specifically has really changed how their attitude. They have a no-party role. Airbnb is already very much interested in regulating. You know, their stock is going public here in the next month or so, and they've gone through a lot of changes in order to have that happen. So you have not only a layer of Erie's restrictions, but you also have a restriction on these short-term rental sites like the RBO and Airbnb. So I just feel that we need to open it up to the nice neighborhoods, if it even has some appetite. You know, there's only a couple in Glenwood Hills, and I challenge to say that my house is disruptive when there's a foreclosure next door to me, and there are several homes that aren't kept up. And there are neighbors, I know that one neighbor is ill, and, you know, nobody helps him out, his yard looks like, what looks, it doesn't look very nice. So I think what you're finding is people just don't want rentals. They have their ideas about what they are, and I know initially, when I was, got a written letter saying, "We just don't want a rental." They didn't say it was a disruption, they didn't say they didn't like this, they didn't like that, "We just don't want a rental." And there's very little to negotiate with that. So I think it's really important that there is a regulation, and the revenues are there for the city, the county, and the state. And I feel that's important to the city. I mean, they can use the revenue. You know, I don't think you should sell out to the revenue, but I think you can still keep the charm and elegance of Glenwood. No one loves that city more than I do. And I am a huge advocate. I mean, I've had, I put that house on an auction down here in Florida, where someone bought it for a week's vacation. They come back every year. They didn't even know where Erie was. And all of the reviews that we've gotten, which I think that the commission may want to take a look at, along with the other Airbnbs, the heartwarming, loving stories that have brought people back. But as Lucinda mentioned, it's not hangover, it's not bachelor's night, it's not frat parties. There was one incident with a disgruntled owner who couldn't sell their house because they weren't allowed to put a "for sale" sign. So they decided they would get back at the neighborhood, put a lockbox on Airbnb, and had an incident. That was, like, ridiculous. And that was one time, three or four years ago. It was a few years ago. Only time I ever heard one bad thing about any of the Airbnbs. And usually, an Airbnb person has a family car, it's one car, it's the same as the person that lives in the house. There's a car coming and there's a car going. And if you're in a nice, quiet neighborhood, you aren't the type that's out at the bar till 3:30 in the morning. I would venture to say that there are neighbors now in that neighborhood that have parties till all hours of the night. I don't have a problem with that, me personally, but there is that going on in a regular neighborhood. People live. You know, they have graduation parties, they have weddings, you know, they even have funerals, but they, you know, you've got people just living in a neighborhood. And I've never seen anything different than that. And I've been in Airbnbs, even in other countries, and it's the same wonderful thing. And I know that you all are aware of during COVID that people are seeking Airbnbs even for work, but they prefer them more than hotels, which isn't good for the hotels. But this too is a cycle, and this too shall pass. But it still is a very, very growing thing for a huge population in this country, and Erie's offers so much. You don't have to destroy your city just to open it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Liz Allen?
Hi, I'm speaking, well, not so much for being on city council, but as a freelance writer, I wrote a story about Kathy's Airbnb, I think it was probably about a year ago, and she and her sisters invited me into the house. I was, like, totally charmed and blown away by how, just how wonderful it was. But the interesting thing was, shortly after I wrote that story, I'm a member of The Times' Old Newsies, and I went to the annual dinner, which would have been the first Friday in December, and there was nowhere for me to sit down. I couldn't find somebody to sit with that I knew, so I just went to a table at random. And there were two people at that table. One of them had made a reservation at Kathy's house for, I believe, a family wedding. I think another one was looking forward to it for family coming home over the holidays. And it was just like, at random, I sat down, these two guys started talking about how great that Airbnb was. I've also, after that, Kathy Schoff and I met with Kathy and her sisters and Ben, because we've been trying to find a way forward for this. And Ben, I believe under Pennsylvania law that Airbnbs do pay the hotel tax, and Kathy Schoff and I also met at Visit Erie. And the idea that Airbnbs are going to hurt Erie's, that's not what we were told. We know that there are people who come to Erie who do want alternatives to hotels. They are part of the, what's available out there for people to find places to stay. I'm the oldest of six, and when my sisters come to town now, even though I, you know, they're welcome to stay here, they've been opting to stay at Airbnbs, although not at the one in Glenwood. So I am very impressed by what Jake and Tessa and whoever else worked on this came up with. I applaud you for looking at this carefully. It's been a long way coming, and thank you for the work that you did. That's all.
Thank you. I think everybody's been given an opportunity to speak and register their comments. Is there any other further discussion from the planning commission members? I do see a couple other people, looks like have just raised their hand. So I will move on to them. Mr. Eli? Go right ahead, Mr. Eli.
All right. I'd like to discuss this case from, first of all, the legal aspect, is that I, as you may know, I was litigated this case in the Corps of Common Pleas before Judge Dmitrovich regarding the Morris property, where she decided that the Morris property could not, did not qualify as an R1 use. The other thing is, is that there is a Supreme Court case, which I feel governs the entire city. The city is not free to do whatever it wants, it has to abide by what the Supreme Court says. And I heard Mr. Betsa give his opinion. However, I have looked, I've read the Slice of Life case, you know, multiple times, and I have never seen anything in a Slice of Life case which would allow R1 zoning to, or single-family zoning to allow a permitted use such as Airbnb. And I don't know if Mr. Betsa is still on the line, but I would ask him, where in that case is it that he feels that the, that you can have Airbnbs and short-term rentals in an R1 district? Second, I also listened very carefully to Tessa, I forgot your last name, and about her comments as to what she proposes as allowing short-term rentals in R1 districts. They permit, if you were to allow Airbnb, Airbnbs and hotels, bread and breakfast, whatever, you would destroy the neighborhoods. That's, one of them is my neighborhood, Glenwood, where we are single-family residents. And I don't know of any reason why you would want to destroy our neighborhood, as been mentioned by many people. The, as far as enforcement goes, the zoning office has not enforced the, the case against Mrs. Morris, where it was decided she wasn't allowed to run her Airbnb. There's also another Airbnb in our neighborhood that has not been enforced. I don't know why that hasn't been, but I, I would say, if you can't enforce the laws as they are, what's going to happen when you open up all these neighborhoods to Airbnbs and the like? There's been a New York Times article that was on October 27th, where they said that Airbnbs, because of the, because of COVID, have allowed many people to use them as party houses. That's where owners are not in the house at the time, like the one that Mrs. Maurer and her sister, who, by the way, Mrs. Morris, neither of which live in the city, have talked about. And they said, between March and October, at least 27 shootings were connected to Airbnb rentals in the United States and Canada. And it's considering, it poses a big risk to the Airbnb's reputation. Finally, and I'm sure, I appreciate your time, because I know I'm running over, but there was some question about racism in Glenwood. Glenwood is a multinational, multirace neighborhood. We have everybody from every ethnic and religious background you could possibly think of in our area. Nobody is banned from owning a property in our neighborhood because of their religion, their race, or anything else. And I really take offense at that kind of statement. The, you cannot open up a neighborhood to Airbnb without, and limit the amount of people in there. That would be constitutionally untenable. There's lots of hotel spaces for everybody to live. You do not need Airbnb. There's lots of hotel spaces for everybody to live. You do not need Airbnb in an R1 neighborhood. The, uh, you know, and, and what, what I would say is just, you know, think about those things when you're, when you're considering whether or not you want to destroy a neighborhood like Glenwood with Airbnb's. Like Mr. Sliker, Spiker, uh, said, you know, you want to preserve neighborhoods, not destroy them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we do have one other person who has not spoken yet. Ms. Whipple.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Um, I would hope that everyone on this Zoom call today is working to move Erie forward. And the Airbnb is most certainly a part of that. Uh, our hope is that we will have guidelines set for Airbnbs. There, we're not, we don't want to destroy a neighborhood. I certainly think we have not done that in Glenwood. If anything, we have maintained our home somewhat better than others in the neighborhood. We have, as my sister has stated before, we have never had one issue with our home, with any of our guests. And for some of the comments that were made today are absolutely ridiculous. The revenue that the Airbnbs, not just ours, all of them bring in to restaurants, shopping, uh, attractions, uh, those are all helpful to Erie. And Erie is trying its best to move forward. By eliminating Airbnbs, uh, in an R1 district just does not make sense. People are not buying homes to turn them into Airbnbs. That, that doesn't make sense either. I would hope that everyone would be able to live in a neighborhood without an issue. And I do take issue with some of the comments from some of the people from Glenwood because they are just not true. And I thank you for my, I, I agree and I had with Ben Henry and the other people that are pro Airbnb. They all have good comments to make. They have facts to present. There are no facts right now. And again, being the last one to speak, um, I thank you for giving me the time because I think everything has already been said for, uh, the pro Airbnb.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for, uh, all the attendees for, for weighing in, sharing your thoughts, your comments. If any of the planning commission members have any other comments to, to add or, uh, Mr. Betza, Kathy, any other comments or, or questions at this point? Please weigh in.
Armand, you're, you're muted.
Armand?
Could they put conditional use, like review this after a year if it was approved? If there's been problems? I guess that would be for Mr. Betza or I don't know if, uh, Tessa knows that answer?
It, it would not, this is Ed Betza talking. It would not be, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Uh, it would not, I, I mean, under that scenario, that would really be, I think, a licensing issue. It would not go, as I see it, to the zoning or the legality of the operation. It would go to the specific application for one specific property. So if you're going to say, we're going to review, we're going to issue rental licenses on an annual basis. And in order to get next year's license, you have to be in good standing. Uh, and you've had a number of violations that would seem to pull you out of good standing and now you would not get the license.
Okay. I have another question if you missed it, Betza. I've stayed in an Airbnb in, in, in another state, obviously within an R1 area with my children and grandchildren. And so what Mr. Eli is saying, does that mean everybody in that country would not be able to have an Airbnb of where they presently have one?
Well, I, I can't speak for anybody else. What I can tell you is that the term R1 is unique to the municipality. An R1 in Miami of Florida and an R1 in Fairview Township and an R1 in Erie PA may or may not be the same. And I do a lot of municipal work and the R1, R2, some have other R designations too. Residential limited business, residential three, residential four. Those are not terms that are standard. Those are unique to the municipality. And so what I would say is that if you restrict, if you have a zone, call it whatever you want. R1, call it Z1. If you have a zone that restricts the property or the use of the property to only single-family homes and nothing else, it's conceivable that our Airbnbs would not be allowed. What I said to you at the beginning is figure out what you want to allow and where you want to allow it. And then you would amend your zoning ordinance accordingly. You can permit, there is no geographical prohibition on Airbnbs in any spot in the city of Erie. You decide where they're allowed. You decide where they're not allowed. So don't, my, my, my sense is don't get tied up into what's the zone called, what's, what's permitted in it. You're going to decide along with the city council as a whole, what is allowed in every district and what those districts are. You can have two districts. You could have 5,000 districts. You decide where it's allowed, what's allowed in that district. So I, I don't, I think, you know, Attorney Eli, uh, and I may not see eye to eye on the, the exact reading of the case, but I think the gist of our, our reading is the same. In very restrictive districts, you may not be allowed to have Airbnbs. But it's up to the city to decide how restrictive those districts will be.
Thank you. Well, as Tessa mentioned earlier, I mean, we do obviously, uh, want to start putting together a, a draft of the changes uh, based on all the comments that we've heard, uh, for the planning commission to look at. We do know that, uh, as far as special exception uses, you do have to define the terms and conditions under which the use can operate. That's what the, that's what the applicant would be required to demonstrate to the zoning hearing board under the special exception use is that they are in compliance with whatever conditions and standards are set forth under the special exception. Um, so it is not an arbitrary approve, deny. They, they do have to meet those standards. So that is something that we will have to spend some time defining uh, for the planning commission to look at, uh, at our next meeting. So, um, you know, at this point, uh, that's our next charge is to, is to kind of put this into, into kind of a draft ordinance form uh, for the planning commission members to, to begin looking at. And, and hopefully we can sign off on, on parts that, you know, we do appear to have consensus on and continue to work on the areas that uh, we, we may not have consensus on at this point, uh, to get to, uh, get to where we need to be.
Just to be clear too, Jake, you're, you're asking for some guidance from a planning commission. I think it, at a minimum, we would need to include a definition of short-term rental within the zoning code. So that's going to be necessary no matter what the decision is on the R1 and RA. And, and then it really comes down to, are these now considered, you can, you can allow them at some level as a special exception. A use permitted by right, which is not really the direction that, that the staff report was suggesting, or not at all. So I think that's a minimum, there's going to be changes and just need some direction from the planning commission. Do you even want to see the amendment showing a special exception and what licensing might look like in the R1, R1A?
Yeah, Jake, from, from my point of view, I think the place to start is to start with the staff report and all the recommendations, including R1, R1A, the licensing, restrictions, those kinds of things. So we have, uh, we can look at kind of the maximum without saying that we're, that's the direction we're going, but for consideration or discussion purposes, I think that's the place to start. And personally, I'd like to see some notion of restriction on the number, you know, whether it's or restrictions on locations, you know, that they can't be closer than somebody together or you know, one on a block or I, I'm not sure what all is appropriate, but let's understand how to control it.
That's the key. I think if you're going to allow special exceptions in R1 and R1A, then you know, to Jake's point earlier, how do you define that? You know, getting a copy of the lease of, or the agreement, the rental agreement, you know, that the limit parties, that it limits the number of guests, number of vehicles, things of that nature, to at least find some way to try to minimize a disruption that maybe a neighbor would say happened from somebody having 20 people in a house next door to them, you know? So defining that special exception, what creates a special exception? What are the limitations of a special exception?
Yeah, agreed. I mean, that, that, that needs to be fleshed out in some, some more defined language put in front of the commission. You know, one thing I will say, and, and it's, uh, it's part of the, part of the report that's been provided. When you talk about occupancy, I mean, we've, we've always, uh, held to what the, what the occupancy standards are in the zoning ordinance. So if a unit is intended to be a single-family dwelling unit, we do have a definition of family. I understand that short-term rentals is basically, you know, it's been determined that doesn't really fit the definition of a dwelling. However, we can still impose occupancy requirements such as if it's, you know, to say that that short-term rental uh, should be limited to single families only at any one time. If that's the intended use. So those are the kinds of standards that uh, essentially are already in the ordinance that we could reinforce and use as part of the conditions for any short-term rental. I'm a proponent of, of saying that we should try to adhere to those occupancy requirements as they exist in order to try and minimize impacts. I don't think we have a large number of properties where, um, you'd be looking at three or four families renting one property at any given time. Uh, like you might find down along the shore, for instance, where houses, properties are built to accommodate multiple families taking a joint vacation. So, you know, I think the occupancy limitations that exist uh, might help us to address the, the neighborhood character concerns.
Yeah, I, Jake, I'd point out that the, uh, Uniform Construction Code also would have be able to help define the number of occupants a structure could safely hold. You know, for similar types of uses.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. If we don't have any other, um, member comments at this point, um, we'll get to work on, on making some revisions and, and getting a draft put together to get back out to everybody uh, to further the discussion. Uh, with that, that's the last item in our agenda. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Yes.
I'd like to thank everybody for their time and, uh, to be continued. Thank you all and, uh, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too.